I'd like to call the November 26, 2024 Mathacton School District Board of Directors' regular board meeting to order. Next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Zerbi, can you introduce our guest from Eagleville?
This evening, we have two guests. Leading in the pledge, we have Wyatt Tolan, and then telling us how much we love Eagleville Elementary School, we have Nina Becker. Wyatt, please lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Hello, I'm Nina Becker. Hello, I'm Nina Becker, a proud 4th grade's Eagleville student. Some things that I love about Eagleville are how the teachers are always caring to all the students, and they have taught me so much in my subjects. The kids and staff are all caring, kind, and helpful. Eagleville has taught me so many great and valuable lessons I will use throughout my entire life, especially making sure all the students are being safe, respectful, and responsible.
Thank you Wyatt and Nina, and if you would be so kind, join Madam President and I out front so that we can take a photo and issue your junior board certificates.
The public is hereby advised of the audio and video recording of this meeting for the purposes of rebroadcasting. All board members are present with the exception of Ms. Steele, Ms. Graff, and Ms. Shonda. Next is guests and scheduled speakers, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President, and before we start with our guests and scheduled speakers, I just want to wish the board, our school community, and all of our students a wonderful Thanksgiving holiday. With that, it also gives me great pleasure to introduce a gentleman that has done an outstanding job of leading Eagleville Elementary School. We have Principal Mr. Corcoran, who will soon be Dr. Corcoran in a short while, but we can't wait for that opportunity. Mr. Corcoran, would you please help us recognize Spirit of Mathacton awardees from Eagleville Elementary School?
So, good evening, members of the board, and Dr. Zerbi and Dr. Regina, when we get started here. So first, we are proud to share Mrs. Natalie Pilegi as our professional staff member. Mrs. Natalie Pilegi, a reading specialist at Eagleville Elementary School, is an educational professional with natural teacher leader skills. Mrs. Pilegi works relentlessly to help our students during reading intervention, to develop our students and teachers by pushing into ELA blocks, to help our staff in breaking down and explaining reading data, and in providing reading feedback to families in meetings. Mrs. Pilegi is Eagleville's unofficial reading leader and someone her colleagues and our staff can go to when we need her professional opinion. We respect her knowledge base and her ability to communicate. In addition to her reading knowledge skills, Mrs. Pilegi is a proud parent and a previous special education teacher in another school district. Natalie uses these skills to understand the strengths of each student and to help pinpoint areas of focus, but most importantly, finding ways to make connections with each student. Natalie knows each Eagleville student beyond reading data and can be seen each day greeting students at our main entrance during student arrival. Natalie values collaboration and organization, and she is honest, hardworking, and a true team player. Mrs. Pilegi is a model of the spirit of Mathacton. Next, we have Mrs. Noelle Mullen, who is our support staff recipient, and she is an instructional assistant. Mrs. Noelle Mullen embodies the spirit of Mathacton. Mrs. Mullen is a proud parent of three children at Skyview, Arcola, and Mathacton High School, is a Mathacton alum, and has served as an Eagleville Elementary Home and School Officer. She is also a highly skilled instructional assistant at Eagleville. Noelle is caring, dedicated, and a hardworking professional who values each student and works incredibly hard to help our children and to support each classroom she works in. Mrs. Mullen has the ability to connect with each student by knowing each child in the classroom and what is needed to support each individual best. Outside of the classroom, Noelle is a staple of our positive school community. She can be seen greeting students and families in our car line, helping children during arrival and dismissal, and keeping our playground engaging and organized during recess. Noelle is a true asset to our school and district community. Next, we have our 4th grade student, Charlotte Morris. Charlotte, an Eagleville 4th grader, lives the spirit of Mathacton and how she goes about her day, each and every day, at Eagleville Elementary School. She is kind and supportive of her classmates, both in the classroom and during recess and PE. During course subject time, Charlotte works hard, is organized, and actively participates in discussions with thoughtful contributions and by listening to others attentively. Her teacher, Ms. Lowe, used the words reliability and integrity to describe Charlotte as she emphasized her being a positive role model for her peers. These words are the ultimate compliment as to Charlotte's character and approach. At our school, Charlotte participates in chorus, and as her special area teachers described, she consistently helps others in a humble way. We are so very proud of Charlotte in earning this Spirit of Mathacton Award and look forward to all that Charlotte will accomplish and share in her years at Mathacton and beyond. Congratulations, Charlotte. And we also have Mrs. Leslie Handler, our volunteer with kindergarten help. Mrs. Leslie Handler is a former Mathacton teacher who has spent over 30 years working with Mathacton elementary students, mostly with our kindergarten students. She retired in 2013 and remains very active in our community and with her loving husband, children, and grandchildren. Since her retirement, Leslie has continued educating children in and around the community. She tutors children in need as well as lending a helpful hand to our Eagleville kindergarten teachers and students on a regular basis. Leslie helps us by reviewing letters, sounds, sight words, listening to children read, reading to the classroom, helping students complete missed work, creating crafts, and copying papers for the lessons. Leslie brings a wealth of knowledge and experience with her and always remains positive with the children she helps. Leslie exemplifies the spirit of Mathacton.
Thank you, Mr. Corcoran. If we could, we can let individuals who want to leave at this point in time of the meeting can do so. We'll just give you a few minutes, or you're welcome to stay. So we'll give about three minutes, and we'll let people have an opportunity to walk out and have a nice Thanksgiving holiday. Next on the agenda, we have Dr. Regina to present to the Board of School Directors the collective bargaining agreement. Dr. Regina and Dr. Sergini together worked with labor leaders of Teamsters to provide this early bird agreement before you this evening, and he will go over the details, which I know you've seen as Board of School Directors previously to tonight's, but as we commonly do, provide it as a public presentation as it's posted to the agenda here this evening. Dr. Regina?
Thank you, Dr. Zerbi. So, an early bird agreement typically is done in the fall preceding the end of a contract. And so, most you know, the Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement will be ending June 30, 2025, and it's customary for us to start the negotiations process in January. When there aren't a lot of items on the table and the trust is strong between both the board and the association, there are opportunities for an early bird agreement, which is what we're presenting before you this evening. What we're going to go through is some of the details of the language and some of the numbers regarding the early bird agreement specific to the Teamsters unit. First, we're going to be looking at personal leave. And so, what I would like to explain to the board is that there was an interest to create consistent language between what goes on with personal leave and vacation leave. There's a lot of discrepancies in the language, and so the Teamsters Association and the administration and board felt it was a good place for us to create some consistency, and you'll notice that in some of the language changes. The first is with personal leave. We did, we have 10 blackout dates at three different times in the contract. We did bring those down to five blackout dates, which what we did not have, and we're going to see a little bit later, is vacation days had no blackout dates. And so, in a way to make sure that we had both of those in the contract, we were able to reduce those five days at Teamsters' request, and yet at our request, add those to the vacation language to create some consistency. And so, there still remains 15 blackout dates in the CBA. And I apologize, CBA will stand for Collective Bargaining Agreement. I'll work on my acronyms a little bit there, sorry. Next is holidays. And so, specific to holiday pay, what we looked at is when an employee is on their probationary period, they do not receive holiday pay during that period. And so, there was a request for us to look at being able to pay people for the holiday pay during the probationary period, and we certainly felt that that was a request that we would want to honor. And so, that is language that we are removing as well, and we will be paying, looking to pay Teamsters certainly at your approval, to be able to pay them during holidays during their probationary period. The next article under vacations, and again, I could have certainly explained this probably better in the beginning, the first bit of language is the current language, below that is the language that would go into the tentative agreement. The next one, we're talking about the right to earn or use immediately vacation days. And let me explain a little bit about what that means. Currently, what happens is when an employee comes into the district and they're a Teamster employee, they will earn vacation days through their first year, but will not have the opportunity to use any of them. So many of the employees that we hire, they do not get the right to use vacation days until they make it to the next July 1st. That certainly isn't something that every employee has to go through, and it certainly hasn't helped us in our effort to recruit great qualified candidates here in Mathacton for the Teamster unit. So we both agree that this would certainly be a great move for us, the district, and it certainly is a good move for Teamsters. And so, employees will be able to use vacation days immediately upon being hired by the district. The one adjustment that we did make to the number of vacation days that they would have, in the second year, they do have 10, in the first year, they have five, but they are the only employees in the district of, are those employees that work 260 days that have vacation that start with five. Everyone else does start with 10, and we thought it would be equitable and certainly made sense to move them to 10 as well. Article 23, we're still on vacations. This is just language, the other element of language that talks about vacation days being accrued and being used after July 1st. This was a line that we needed to remove to, again, allow them to utilize vacation upon immediately being hired by the district. The next article, Article 23.6 for vacations, talks about the notification of letting us know typically has been for vacations, two weeks of notice prior to taking vacation, but there was no notice specifically for personal days, and so, we looked to make sure that we had five for both. And so, we'll have five days' notice for both vacation and personal. And so, we did adjust this to five to be consistent. This is one of those consistent language things that certainly benefits really both, but certainly the district. Right now, there are a limited number of vacation days that Teamsters employees can take during the summer, but they can expend all of their personal days. And so, they typically get five personal days, 12 vacation, excuse me, a number of vacation days, but 12 that they can use in the summer for a total of 17. The summer is one of our busiest times for our Teamsters group naturally with our buildings being vacated, it's when a lot of our cleaning gets done, a lot of our building and grounds work is very busy. And so, having people stay here over the summer and certainly be able to utilize your vacations, maybe when that cleaning isn't going on, would definitely be more prudent for the district. And so, we did, we're able to limit the use of the 17 days that would normally go into vacation and personal to 12 combined, which does give us a little bit more control in having some individuals stay here a little bit longer in the summer. Some new language, this language is certainly, we talked a little bit about this one before, this is about being consistent between vacation and personal days, and this is the language about blackout days. Now, there were no blackout days for vacation, so if you can imagine, we had blackout days for personal, but someone still could take the vacation during those blackout days. And so, in an effort to be consistent, we did have blackout days language for vacation day usage as well. We also have language in the CBA, the Collective Bargaining Agreement, that talks about not being able to utilize personal days in combination with any other approved leave, but we did not have language that said vacation days couldn't be used in combination. And so, to be consistent, we made sure that we had vacation days in there as well. Moving into some of the numbers, when we're going to look at, first, we're going to look at comprehensive medical, the first blue graph or blue table is signifying the numbers that would have been represented in the last collective bargaining agreement for 21, 22, up to 24, 25. And what you're seeing for OC1, OC2, POS, and OC3 are open choice 1, open choice 2, our POS healthcare, and our open choice 3. And each one of these is a different level of healthcare, and the numbers that you see there are the premium shares paid by the employee. And so, if we look at an example for open choice 1 for 24, 25, if my eyes serve me correctly, it looks like 21%, which means the employee would pay 21% of the cost of the medical pair premium for open choice 1. We're going to look at each one of our other options, looking at next will be our prescription drug insurance, and we're looking at for all of these about a three-year, you can see the three-year term, but about 1% increase over the term of the contract for three years. We're looking at that for prescription drug insurance, for dental insurance, and for vision care. And so, all of those have the same metrics evolved for both vision prescription and dental, and have the same numbers associated with the premium contribution by our employees. The retirement benefit, when an employee retires, they are paid at a certain rate for those sick days that they have accumulated over their existence here in the contract for 12-month employees that do accumulate 12 sick days a year, and there is a limit to how many they can get paid out for in retirement and a limited amount that they get paid per day. And so, the request to move that to $50 is consistent with what we pay our MSB employees at $50, and so, we thought that was certainly appropriate and did move that to 50 at 120 days. The duration of the agreement, as we stated earlier, we talked about benefits, was three years, so we are looking to start this contract July 1st, 2025, since the current contract ends on June 30, 2024, and this contract will go through June 30 of 2028. Wage provisions, Teamsters does have a tiered effect to new employees, so year one new employees is 85%, year two is 90, year three 95, year four does go to 100%, but there was a request for the master mechanic position to start at 100%. And we do think this is certainly appropriate for the master mechanic position. It is something that naturally, we did have a master mechanic opening, and I think it really did limit us in being able to hire some qualified candidates, both with vacation days and with 100% pay. So we think that both of those would certainly help us in recruiting some of these very difficult positions to find. The requested increases for wages will be 2.5%. As you can see, the previous contract was also at 2.50%, and so, the request to continue that through the term of this contract each year has been extended at their request and at ours. And the last slide, well, not quite the last slide, but the last slide with that on it is going to be the rates that would be associated with each position each year of the contract. And so, naturally, if you look across the top, for instance, the custodian rate in 2025 is 3264, and will end 27, 28 at 3429. So ultimately, before you this evening is a recommendation for the ratification of the terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the Mathacton School District and Teamsters Local 384, and that will be effective July 1, 2025 until June 30, 2028. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Regina, and for the board members' reference, that is item 13D on the agenda for your consideration this evening. Do we have any questions for Dr. Regina with respects to the presentation of the agreement? To my right, seeing no questions to my left. Madam, Canker?
No questions, just wanted to say a general comment of thank you to the administration of the district and to the leaders of Teamsters. It really shows a great dedication and relationship between the both parties, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Canker.
That ends guests and scheduled speakers for this evening.
We will now move on to reports. The committee reports are attached, and next from the MCIU this month, Ms. Perdue.
The MCIU met last week, similar to what we have going on here, just trying to put in things to get them through the holidays and reference to any things that will need to be approved for the board, just to keep business going. But one of the things they reviewed this month was their goals, and one of the comments that was provided was just to make sure those goals are measurable. One of their, two of their goals included to lead and identify future trends, implement best practices in pursuit, to pursue and execute, and then also develop a cultural trust, respect, and transparency that permeates throughout all internal and external relationships. And I think members felt that they needed to provide something that could be measured. So, there was a little bit of So there was a little bit of discussion on that and more to come in how they can try to incorporate that into their goals to be able to make sure that the board members can measure what they are achieving from it. One of the items that I wanted to bring up was based on a legislative report update in reference to the Universal Service Fund, USF, is called that provides for four programs, I believe, and included schools and libraries, low income, so more like in relation to home internet, high cost, expensive to connect areas and rural health. And and I think you can think of an example of that as telehealth. And I believe just recently, as far as last week, the U.S. Supreme Court agreed to to hear a case that came from the circuit court that was overturning this. So this was heavily discussed just because if, in the event the Supreme Court decides to rule that the Universal Service Fund is unconstitutional, it bears the cost on any of those that I listed, like libraries and schools to be able to fund that. I believe currently, they're saying it will be about nearly $4 billion of available funding for schools that will go away. So it's something that can impact schools and libraries if they are receiving some of the funds. So more to come, but I just wanted to share the highlight from their meeting. And that's it for me. The MCIU will not meet in December, and the next meeting will be in January.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to North Monco Tech, Ms. Austin and Mr. Mersky.
Thank you very much. The North Monco Tech Joint Operating Committee met on Monday, November 18th. We heard from students who are participating in a co-op program where they go to work. We heard from one student who's interning with an auto repair, one student who's working in the fire EMS field. We heard how valuable the work experience is for them and for their employers. We learned about how North Monco Tech partners with community businesses for this program. And we also reviewed the rubric that's used to evaluate the students in the workforce. We also heard about some student leaders who were invited to attend a fall leadership conference at Kalahari Resorts, November 13th to 15th, where they developed communication skills and leadership skills. Then we found out that Methacton's share in the 2024-2025 school year is going to increase slightly from 13.66% to 13.93%. The the rate that Methacton pays North Monco Tech is based on a five-year attendance average. So our attendance average has increased slightly over the last five years. And all other agenda items were approved as presented. That's my report.
Great, thank you very much. We will now move on to our student representatives, Victoria Phan and Marin Wells.
Hello, my name is Marin Wells, and I'm a junior student representative. The Methacton High School Theater Company has been working hard on its play, A Christmas Carol. They performed in the auditorium on November 14th, 15th and 16th. The play was a huge success with amazing turnout. Field hockey just finished their season by qualifying for the PIA double A state playoff. They played Imayas at Quikertown High School. Unfortunately, they lost with the score 3-1 Imayas. Congratulations to the field hockey team for having a successful season. With fall sports coming to an end, winter sports are a buzz. Basketball, swimming, wrestling, cheerleading and track have all started practicing for their upcoming season. Marching band takes 7th at U.S. Nationals. Congratulations to the marching band. On Halloween, Methacton held costume contests for all students during lunches and staff throughout the day, with counseling, main office, mental health department emerging as the winners with all SpongeBob themed costumes. On November 18th, Minithon held their dine and donate event at the Eagleville Tap House. And the Medicine and Science Club hosted a coffee house with student performers, karaoke, snacks and more on November 20th from 2:45 to 4:00 p.m.
My name is Victoria Phan, and I'm one of the returning senior student representatives. It's great to see all of you again. Students were able to get a little break with the long weekend. On Veterans Day, November 5th, many students volunteered as poll workers for the election. Additionally, Methacton mentors held their dine and donate event at Chick-fil-A, and parents were able to sign up for and attend parent teacher conferences. Many of Methacton's academic clubs have begun competitions, with Academic Decathlon competing at Hershey High School on November 9th, and the Future Business Leaders of America Club will be attending their regional leadership competition next month on December 12th. This past week, Methacton held a Thanksgiving food drive with canned goods, pies and lots of more packaged meals for families in need. On November 22nd, Best Buddies held their Friendsgiving dinner. And last night, November 26th, Minithon held their annual trivia night at PJ Wella Hands from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. A few items to be aware of in December are next Saturday, December 7th, the high school will host Breakfast with Santa at 10:30 a.m. The Triumph Music Honor Society's induction ceremony for new members will be held December 10th after school from 2:30 to 4:00. And the Band, Chorus and Orchestra's Joint Winter Concert Assembly will be on December 20th at 7:00 p.m. at Arcola. We hope all students, staff and board members have a relaxing Thanksgiving break. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move to the foundation report, Ms. Pergolini.
Hi, everyone. We had a fantastic night celebrating our amazing Apex Award winners. It was truly inspiring to see the Methacton spirit shining so brightly in our honorees, Chris Drummond, Fran Held, Matt Elsmore, Luann Milkie and Karen Flugfelder. A huge thank you goes out to our generous sponsors and everyone who attended and donated. You helped make the evening a resounding success, and we're already at hard work, hard at work planning for 2025. Speaking of 2025, mark your calendars for our annual dodgeball tournament on Sunday, March 16th. Get ready for another action-packed day of fun and competition. Registration opens January 3rd. And lastly, stay tuned, our board is busy reviewing even more grant requests from our teachers. We'll have another exciting announcement in December to share with you. So thanks again for all your support at the event, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much. I know, I think all the board members were there, almost majority were there in attendance, and we really had a great time, and thank you for all the efforts. It was great. We'll now move to the superintendent's report, Dr. Zerbi.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, you'll see on the agenda the monthly write-to-know report as well as the advisements as listed. That ends my report.
Thank you. I'd like to excuse the student board members if you'd like to. Enjoy your break and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you.
We'll now move to public comment on board action items. The board will now take comments on board action items. This is an opportunity for residents to comment on matters that are to be decided upon as outlined on the agenda. The board asks that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. The Board of School Directors may choose to respond to matters following the conclusion of the comments on the board action items. Seeing no comments from public, we will now move to board meeting minutes. May have a motion to approve the September 17th, 2024 work session minutes, the October 9th, 2024 special meeting minutes, the October 22nd, 2024 work session minutes, and the October 29th, 2024 regular meeting minutes as attached. Ms. Cleary, can I have a second? Ms. Austin, any comments or or questions? Seeing none, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. We'll now move to fiscal items.
Thank you, Madam President. There are seven fiscal items on the agenda for your consideration tonight, items 9A through 9G. There have been no changes since last week. However, riders have been added to items 9E or Cola Facade Survey and item 9F, Woodland Control Upgrade.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve all fiscal items as presented. Ms. Austin, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue, any comments or questions? Right, seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. We'll now move on to personnel items. May it, sorry, Dr. Sergini.
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening. For the consideration of the board in November, there are the items presented last week at the work session with the following additions. There are three additional resignations, professional, all for retirement. Catherine Markle, first grade instructor at Worcester at the end of the 24-25 school year, after 25 dedicated years of service to the students of Methacton. David Ford, social studies instructor at Arcola, after 30 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton. And Dr. Anita Morgan, second grade instructor at Arrowhead. Her retirement is effective December 31st, 2024, after 29 years of dedicated service to the students of Methacton. Kit, David and Anita are dynamic and caring teachers who use innovative and engaging teaching strategies to build skills for their students. The positive impact that these three individuals have had on our community can be seen in the generation of students who were very well-prepared to achieve success throughout their school years and later in life because of the foundational skills that they learned from these three exceptional teachers. The Methacton family wishes Kit, Dave and Anita the very best in retirement. There's one additional resignation classified, Sharon Evans, paraprofessional at Worcester, resignation for retirement after 27 years of exceptionally dedicated service to the students of Methacton. Sharon is a knowledgeable and caring instructional assistant who always goes above and beyond to meet the unique needs of the students with whom she is working. She is an invaluable resource to the students and staff of our school district, and her Methacton family wishes her the best in her retirement. There's one uncompensated leave classified addition, Christina Haas, paraprofessional at Woodland for the dates listed, and the additional supplemental contracts for the Act 48 Committee and two additional winter coaches. Thank you.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve all personnel items as presented. Ms. Cleary, may I have a second? Mr. Winters, any questions or comments? Yes, Mr. Winters.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Sergini. Being a mid-year second grade instructor retiring, what are usually the plans around the almost midpoint in the school year?
Dr. Morgan has been out on a leave the entire school year, and we have a long-term substitute in the position.
Any other comments or questions? My only thing was just to say that these people that are retiring, they have had many years of service and have truly made an impact that's positively to all the students and staff here. And I'm sad to see them go, but I do, I am excited for their next steps in their future, so. And then just remind us again that this is, this is a good thing that we've done as far as, you know, making sure retirees are placed in. Can you just remind the board again of the protocol we put in?
Certainly. We have an early retirement incentive in the collective bargaining agreement. If our teachers inform us by January 1st that they intend to retire at the conclusion of the school year, there is additional compensation for some of the days that they are paid out for, primarily sick days. So we are able to find out early on, do an assessment of our needs and then begin to post positions well before the end of the school year in the summer, when we used to do all of our posting and hiring. So it's definitely a benefit to the district.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And that's a great thing that was added. Thank you. We'll now move to curriculum and programs. Oh, gosh. I do apologize, I'm ready to just rock and roll. All right. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Thank you very much. We will now move to the curriculum and programs.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, under curriculum and programs, there are two educational agreements, and they read as follows. Approve the Educational Service Agreement for Student 280712 with special language and terms of the agreement drafted by the district solicitor. And item 2 reads, approve the Educational Service Agreement for Student 251654 with special language and terms of the agreement drafted by the district solicitor.
Thank you very much. May have a motion to approve the motions under the curriculum programs as presented. Ms. Austin, may I have a second? All right, Ms. Perdue, any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Thank you. We'll now move on to policy.
Thank you, Ms. Canckro. For this evening, you'll be voting on the second read policies. There are very limited changes to that, typically formatting changes for all the 600 series that are listed there in second read, and no changes from last week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. May have a motion to approve all policies listed for second read. Ms. Cleary, may I have a second? Mr. Winters, any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Now we'll move to other.
Thank you, Madam President. This evening, we list under other gifts and donations. So there's a three that were listed at the work session. Under 13B trips, at the reminder of Ms. Austin, we added the cost to the district to those trips as listed. So that is new for your review. Under transportation, we listed six individuals to be added to the employee roster. And the last item, 13D, reads, approve the ratification of terms of the collective bargaining agreement between Methacton School District and Teamsters Local 384, effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. Terms were provided to the Board of School Directors as the attachment.
Thank you. May have a motion to approve all items listed under other as presented. Ms. Austin, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue, any comments or questions? Right, seeing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 6 to 0. Dates for board members' calendars. The upcoming board meetings are listed on the agenda, also are the Methacton website. As a reminder, the December reorganization meeting will be held at the high school LGI. We'll now move on to old business. Does anyone have any old or new business? Mr. Winters?
No, just for clarification, on Monday's meeting, it says reorganization and regular board meeting. Do we have a regular board meeting on Monday as well?
Based on my discussions with the administration, we have no items that would require board action. Therefore, the Monday's meeting will only be a reorganization meeting, and that'll take place as listed on the calendar and on our website, but it will not be followed by a regular voting meeting.
And Dr. Zerbi, just for clarification, moving forward for locations for the meetings?
Yes, so at the reorganization meeting, there is an attached board meeting calendar that also lists the committee meetings and the work session and voting meeting dates, as well as the locations. If those are approved at the December 2nd reorganization meeting, then the locations for all committee meetings will be at Farina Administration Building, and all work sessions and voting meetings will be held at the LGI at the high school.
Thank you. I would like to add, if we do vote on that decision, to thank everybody here at Arcola. I was just talking to the maintenance over there, and they they are very excited for the change if possible, but I do want to thank them for all the hard work that they've done. I mean, it's been quite, quite a feat for them every, you know, whenever we're here. So thank you for that. We will move to courtesy of the floor. Yes, Ms. The, sorry, Ms. Cleary.
That's okay, I had a new business item I was hoping to discuss. And this is in reference to bullying. We've had several parent concerns raised up to the board recently around instances of bullying at school. I know we all feel that school should be a place of safety, of inclusivity and of fostering learning for all students. As a board, we have a policy in place to address both bullying and cyberbullying. However, I do believe that as a board, we have a responsibility to reflect on the implementation of both the prevention and intervention programs that the district has in place to address bullying. So therefore, I'm asking that the administration provide the full board with, at an upcoming meeting with data and information so that we can have a discussion as a board to reflect and to evaluate what we're doing as a district, and then potentially determine if if the district needs more funding or more resources, or we need to do something more, do something different, or take some other action. I'm going to send a follow-up email. I'm going to send a follow-up email to Dr. Zerbi with this data request, but what I'm really asking for is a, is a more student-focused information, such as the number of instances of reported bullying over two-year time spans so that we can evaluate any trends by elementary, by middle, by high school groupings, the types of reported bullying in general terms, whether that be based on gender, LGBTQ-plus status, racial, religious, ethnicity, et cetera. And then what district-wide program or other is in place to address things like bullying and the harm it causes overall, supports and resources in place for the student who's bullied, supports and resources in place for students that exhibit bullying behaviors? How are we teaching, or what are we, how are we teaching our students that it's okay to speak up? And appropriate ways that they might do that, to report what they hear and see to their teachers or administrators, or in the defense of others who are bullied? Then, are we providing training to our teachers to identify marginalized students who could be at risk of bullying? Are we, how are we training teachers, or are we training teachers to connect and check in with students to be sure that they're okay? And then how are we engaging with our parents to, and guardians, to advise them of what the district is doing to combat bullying, bullying prevention, and intervention at school? And then I think overall, whatever program we are utilizing, how is it selected? How is it being implemented? How is its impact and effectiveness being measured, evaluated, and reevaluated? And if there's any information on what plans or program, programming the district may have coming up in the future. I know it's a lot of information. I'm, I'm just concerned by the, by the number of parental concerns that, as a board that we've received and that I've received personally. So I'm hopeful that we could get some data so that we could actually have a discussion at a full board meeting. You know, after the holidays, I would love for it to be sometime in January or February, but I leave that up to the president and vice president and administration to talk about. Thank you.
Ms. Perdue?
No, Ms. Cleary, I do appreciate you for bringing it up. I think we've had, we have seen a lot of issues being brought to the board just this school year, and I know we're only in November, so it is great to ask. I do know, just from, based on seeing an ed committee and some of the programs that they're leading, many of our schools, and I know Dr. Regina and Dr. Gravenese can speak on that, but I think, yeah, maybe a time to present it to the board will be great. And I do appreciate you for providing specifics, because I was going to ask in reference to what data you're looking for, because I think we have a lot of information, but I do appreciate you for bringing up the specifics. And I, one of the things that I walk away with when we hear a lot of, or we hear of these incidences, you know, I think there's a matter of communication gap, and we, we've identified that, and exactly how we're going, whether it's communication to students, parents, teachers alike, I think there's always an opportunity for growth when we think about communication. And I know, I'm grateful, because we now do have a communications director, and I think we're in great position just from speaking to her. I think we're, we'll be good. But I think there's a lot that we can do in reference to that. We do have a lot of programs that we've piloted, and we can speak to how we're choosing those pilots, but we can also speak to what we're seeing, how effective those programs are. And one of the things that I, I heard recently was in reference to reporting, because I think this school year, maybe we started to put those codes up for students to report. One of the items that was brought up to our attention recently was that in Skyview, not all our students in Skyview have cell phones, right? And I know when my son was in Skyview, he didn't have a cellphone. And so I think we took for granted that all students may, at that level, may have cell phones, but they don't, they have no way of being able to actually use that QR code to report incidents. I think that's something that we can work on by whether we provide them a way to actually do a reporting on their Chromebook. So I thought that was interesting, because I thought about it, and I was like, yeah, not everybody have a cellphone. Even at the high school, I'm sure there's kids that don't have it. So it's not only meaningful for Skyview, but it's probably meaningful for all the buildings that we have those QR codes at. So I do appreciate you for bringing that up, and I think it's something that we can look at and discuss and see exactly how we present that to the board. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none? We'll move to courtesy of the floor. Just seeing if there's anybody in here. I'm not seeing that. So if anybody who is watching this live, you can always submit questions via email to information@mathacton.org. So before we move to adjournment, I just want to wish all of our Mathacton community a very happy Thanksgiving. May have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Ms. Alston, may I have a second? Ms. Perdue, meeting adjourned. Thank you.